Six o'clock, you guys ready?
And Al is gonna be here, but he said he was gonna be here, but I think he's gonna be asleep.
No, no problem. Alright, good evening everyone. I now call this meeting of the Blythewood Planning Commission to order. On behalf of the commission, I'd like to welcome all of our guests, residents, stakeholders, and those watching via our live stream. Thank you for your continued interest in the responsible development and planning of our community. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Katasha Hyacinth. Travis Smith.
Here.
Nikki Schaffner. Marcus Taylor. Al McLaren. Jamal Mosley.
Present.
Bill Tomes.
Here. Alright, we have a quorum. And proper notification that this meeting has been made in accordance?
Yes, sir, it has, and I will mark Mr. McLaren present coming in, so.
Right on. Alright. Mr. McLaren, before you take a seat, we're gonna stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright. Yes, sir?
If I could just make a quick note on the minutes, and I think I did put something in there, but obviously we had technical difficulties last meeting, so I did wanna note that the minutes are more short and sweet, but we do, we did capture all the motions and the votes, so, but they're not as in-depth as they usually are.
I got it, I saw that, and I saw the remark about public comments too, that was pretty good. Alright, um, so, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting held on two June twenty twenty-five. Commissioners, you've all received a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections or amendments?
I will accept the minutes as noted.
Yeah, second next. Alright. We've got a motion to approve the minutes as they stand and a second? Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, uh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Let's go ahead and...
Oh, uh, well, I'm sorry, what was the motion?
It's to approve the minutes as they stand.
And you made it, thank you, Mr. Smith. Yeah, and then just an all in favor.
Alright, alright, all in favor of approving the minutes as they stand, declared by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, those minutes are approved. Without corrections. Alright, um. We'll go ahead and move to our action items. I ask that we proceed with respectful dialogue following our parliamentary procedures. Commissioners, as we address each item, please wait to be recognized before speaking. Alright, action item Alpha is gonna be the zoning map amendment. Twenty twenty-two oh four, Mike Alpha, Town Center to Limited Industrial District. This amendment would rezone property located in the eight hundred block of Community Road. That is the property beside and behind the Johnny's Produce building.
Yes, sir.
At Community Road and Blythewood.
I've got it pulled up here on the screen for those, this is the property in question here. And if I can make a small note, Mr. Chair, the twenty twenty-two should read twenty twenty-five, that was a typo on my part, so I could just make that note for the record.
Alright. And you have a little history regarding that action item? I know we have representatives here, would you like to speak on it, sir?
Yes, sir, yeah, I'll kinda give it a rundown here, and then we can ask the applicant to come up and present, so, yeah, so, this is at the eight hundred block of Community Road, and as I had pulled up on the slide just moments ago, tax map number is R one five one zero zero dash zero four dash zero two. It is just a hair over eighteen acres. It has frontage on Blythewood Road and Community Road. Our applicant is Ms. Stephanie Sheekey. She is not here today, but she has representatives from U-Haul to present. They are requesting a rezone from Town Center District TC to Limited Industrial LI, and it will... Excuse me, yes, so, it, I, see here, I said it will remain in the architectural overlay district, I meant to say it will not remain in the architectural overlay district. Industrial zoning does not constitute any kind of COA, Certificate of Appropriateness, from the BAR, so, if approved, that is not a step that they will have to go through. Again, current zoning district is Town Center. That is intended for, you know, vibrant mix of retail, restaurants, office, business, and even some residential being in town homes. The surrounding zoning districts, to the northwest, and let me pull up this... So, to the northwest is Town Center District. To the north is also Town Center, to the east is Town Center, and to the south is Limited Industrial, which is the zoning classification that the applicant has applied for. I did, again, I did just mention the architectural overlay will not be in that purview if rezoned. Another thing that I did want to note, again, the applicant is asking for the rezoning of all eighteen acres. It is up to the commission, but I would ask the commission to look at that closely and know that if it is rezoned, I don't think the applicant's gonna use all eighteen acres. And so, it, it could be to where you want to ask the applicant to subdivide to the Limited Industrial and then leave the rest of it Town Center, but I do wanna be clear that the applicant is asking for all eighteen acres to be zoned to Limited Industrial. I believe... Also, I do wanna note that the twenty twenty, twenty thirty Comprehensive Plan for the future land use map, it does show that any districts, any industrial districts are not compatible. Again, now, the town has certainly changed a lot since that Comprehensive Plan was put together, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't at least mention that, what the Comprehensive Plan does call for.
Right. Comprehensive was pre-scout?
Uh, that is correct, yes, sir. And I did put in the chart for LI permitted uses, and again, I wanted to do this, just like I mentioned earlier, if the entire parcel is rezoned to Limited Industrial, you know, these are the potential uses that could be used for whatever property that the applicant does not use. I believe that is everything, Mr. Chair, and if anybody has any questions for me, please feel free to ask, if not, we can ask the applicant to come forward and give his presentation.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If we left it at Town Center, uh... I guess what I'm trying to get is that's so close to Town Center, changing it to LI with that... I'm just kinda confused with it because, you know, it's close to Town Center than the limited liability stuff, it's just so, they can do half, like I say, the store shed, which at one point, you know, the people from Cobblestone, they need more stores, you want the stuff over there, so, uh, just dividing it up like that is the issue that I have, that I have, which I can talk to a little bit more about it, but...
Yeah, and again, you know, if it's something that the board wants to further discuss with the applicant, about how much land they want, they need for, to do their project, you know, it's certainly conversations that can be had, but their request is to rezone all eighteen acres to Limited Industrial. I'm just using this as an example, but say they only need five acres for their project, you know, certainly discussions I think could be had with the applicant about subdividing however much land they need, rezoning that to LI, and then keeping the rest Town Center. And also, I do, for the record, wanna make clear for the commissioners and for the public and those that might be watching online, the Planning Commission is just making a recommendation tonight to the Town Council. The Town Council, I do believe that will go at the end of this month, the last Monday in July, I can't remember the day number of that, but it would go for a first reading, and then it would go for a second reading as well. And if, if the, Mr. Driggers, I might ask you to help me on this, but if the project is approved by, or if the Planning Commission recommends approval, and the Town Council wants to go against that, it requires three-fourths majority to go against whatever the Planning Commission has recommended, and that is in the state statute, I believe.
Just, just for clarification, any action by council that is contrary to the action of the Planning Commission would require a three-fourths vote or supermajority vote for that, and so, if they're in agreement, simple majority, if they differ from your opinion, requires a supermajority.
Thank you, Mr. Driggers. Are there any further questions from commissioners?
I just had one question, if I may. The section that's labeled LI now, is, am I correct that there is a storage facility there at the moment?
Yes, you are correct, yep, yep.
Public storage?
Public storage, right, it was previously Storage Express, I believe, and then, yes, correct, I think about five or six years ago, it changed ownership, and it is now public storage. And it's my understanding that that has been here for nearly thirty years, and I believe before the zoning districts were established, they created that zoning district, just essentially grandfathered in, so they gave the Limited Industrial zoning district to that, to allow that to be in compliance when they created the zoning districts.
I think having some competition there would be healthy. Alright, if there are no further questions or remarks from the commissioners, we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Question?
Yes, sir.
What is the current acreage of the current storage facility that sits on today?
Uh, there's nothing there now, that land is undeveloped.
It's still undeveloped?
It is, yes.
Uh, that is the parcel where they used to do the rodeo and Blythewood's original Juneteenth Festival, right beside Johnny's Produce. Johnny's Produce would be that northwest area of the map, and I think Scout's got some construction materials stored there, and you can't see the entire eighteen acres from the road because there's a tree line there. From the looks of this, they're looking to develop behind that tree line closer to the public storage, right. So, Community Road, what's the name of it?
Of the current, you're asking of the, of the public storage, the total acreage? That is a good question. I'm gonna take a ballpark here, I believe it's about five acres. It, again, I'm ballparking there, but I think between four and five acres is the... It, it does, that's correct, yes, sir. Mr. Chair, that's all I have, so...
And I'll, I'll let the applicant delve in more to Commissioner Smith's question, because they know what they wanna do.
I have a PowerPoint presentation that I will give everybody a copy of, it's here on the screen.
And Steve, you can be here at the podium, or if you're a stander and a walker?
Thank you.
You can take this, and, but I just ask that you speak in the mic when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve Strunk, I am an owner's representative for the U-Haul Company, and we're here to discuss the acreage there on Community Drive, and give you a little bit of background on the company. Founded in nineteen forty-five by a war veteran that had just been discharged and was looking to move, and could not find a way to transport his family's goods. So, he went to the barn out back, and him and his father-in-law built the first U-Haul trailers, and he came, recognizing a need, he came up with the business plan of making trailers for people to share, and that's where, where everything started from. We've been around for over seventy-five years, and have grown, like I said, from one man in a trailer to nationwide and Canada, and... We're a partnership with cities and towns, you know, we enhance local communities by providing a service of being able to transport their belongings and store their goods. The, with things like Scout coming to town, there is a need for the storage and for people to be able to economically move. You know, our company's mantra is to provide a better service at a lower cost, and the lower cost being, being in the neighborhood closer to the people that need them, as opposed to having to drive down to Columbia, the two-notch road and whatnot, we can be very local. We do employ locally, we promote from within. We currently have, in the neighborhood, of a hundred and ninety thousand trucks, a hundred and forty thousand trailers, and forty-three thousand towing devices, so, we have the product to support the customer base. We have a longstanding policy of being a good neighbor to the communities. We are here in times of need, long track record of disaster relief, such as floods, hurricanes, tornadoes, we offer the communities a month-free storage so they can secure their belongings. We frequently act as a staging point for distribution of supplies. You may have heard of the Waffle House gauge when it comes to a disaster, they're the last ones to close and the first ones back in, and we're, and we're right there with them, we're back in there with generators, doing whatever we can do to help the community. We also support police, fire, military. So, coming up here next is the site exhibits, and some of it you've already seen, that the overview of the plot that we're discussing this evening. And it's just a topographical map of the same lot. The lot is pretty flat, there's not a lot of water runoff, not a lot of excavation that has to be done. This slide shows where we are intending to build in regard to the rest of the property, and as was mentioned, we are gonna be at the southern end of the property, so we are, I know a concern of the past was the view coming out of Cobblestone, people looking at this building and whatnot, we're gonna be clear at the south end of the property. I really do not believe that we're gonna be in anybody's eye shot that's pulling out of there. There is foliage there, we will work with zoning, landscape to whatever zoning requirements there are, to make sure that we are not, for lack of a better word, a blight to the community right there across from us. So, this is a, our rendering of the view of the front of the building, this would be facing north. As you can see, it's a very modern facility. Some people have pictures of U-Haul facilities of the past, and we've moved well beyond that. This is brand-new, state-of-the-art, we tried to incorporate color schemes that are appealing. And then, the smaller picture is the view from, that you would see essentially from seventy-one.
Seventy-seven?
I'm sorry, seventy-seven.
Got you, or Community Road?
Yeah, Community, well, no, that one would be... That one, that picture right there would be from the interstate.
The bottom one, okay.
And then, the next one is very similar, that would be the backside of the building, towards public storage. And the side that was facing Community Drive.
Okay, with more garages, I got you. Okay.
And then, we have a second building on the property, it's a warehouse for our U-Box product, portable containers that we bring out to your home, and you can load, we put in the warehouse, so that would be the, the view of that.
So, the U-Boxes will be contained indoors?
Yes.
For the most part, okay.
Yes, yes, the whole intention is for the containers to be in the building, stored safely, building is secured.
That's a big plus, because the U-Haul on Sparkleberry Extension has them all over the place out there.
Yes.
This is good.
And as far as the building itself goes, we're going to have approximately eight hundred units in the building, and I'll touch on security here in just a moment. Art rendering of the facility from seventy-one, seventy-seven, headed north. And the warehouse view from Community Drive. This is a actual picture of a building that we just finished, down in Myrtle Beach, very, very similar construction, so as you can see, the product that we're supplying is what we're showing in the renderings.
Your customers would have a twenty-four hour access to this facility?
To the storage area, yes. That is a service that we provide, and then, the next one here is the picture of their warehouse, and as you can see, it's finished out aesthetically very similar to what the primary building is.
All eight hundred units climate controlled?
The top two floors are heated and cooled, the bottom floor is heated, but all being in one building, you do get an ambient equalization there. So, as I mentioned on the security features, we have a state-of-the-art system, every unit is individually alarmed, the entry door is secured with keypad and swipe card, so you have to have a card to gain access into the building, then you have to also swipe in to turn off your individual unit. So, once inside the building, you can't just open any of them, the only one you can open is the one that you are assigned to. Throughout the building, we have intercom systems, so that if there's ever a concern, distress, anything like that, at very easy reach is an intercom station to where they can contact the front counter and notify them. The facility is covered with cameras, twenty-four hour recording. If we progress to a point where there's outside storage, there would be individual alarms on those as well. State-of-the-art camera system. State-of-the-art camera system, security is very strong. I know that some places have concerns of vagrancy and illegal activity. And I can assure you that at these facilities, that does not happen. Or if it starts to, it's nipped very quickly. Basically, you can't get in the building unless you're allowed in the building. We are a very staunch supporter of sustainability. We have several programs in place to reuse, for example, boxes. You move, what do you do with all your old boxes?
Throw them away.
You flatten them out, throw them away, stack them in the basement. Well, we have a program where you just bring them in, you put them in the assigned spot and the next person that comes in is welcome to them, free of charge. We recycle, our, our moving blankets are all made out of recyclable material. We have a reuse center in the storage, so you're moving out and you're like, well, you know, I really don't need this dresser anymore. We have a designated place to put it so that the next person that comes through is like, hey, that's not a bad dresser, I could use that. You're welcome to it. Reduces landfill waste. Our packing peanuts, I'm sure we're all familiar with those horrible little packing peanuts that go everywhere and you don't know what to do with them. Ours are made out of a starch material, you pour some water on them, they disappear. So again, reducing waste. We are involved with the Conservation Fund. Is a national organization that's committed to replanning, basically replanning trees. So we are putting back into the environment. Our materials that we use on the facilities are environmentally friendly, recycling friendly. And by having more locally located locations, we're also reducing CO2 admissions, emissions. And reducing driving. Each one of our vehicles are the equivalent of nine larger vehicles in the community. So one vehicle takes that place when it comes to the movement. Our roof systems are made to last at least thirty-five years, Energy Star compliant. We use motion sensor lighting to reduce electro- electrocutes. We use LED lighting to reduce energy consumption. We use permeable ground materials to help with water runoff and reabsorption. And, well, I mentioned the reuse centers already. And then the Take a Box, Leave a Box program. And the peanuts. So just kind of a brief overview of the products, you know, the materials that we use are made to be energy efficient. We use double-pane glass in our windows, again, LED lights, programmed thermostats to maintain temperatures. The motion sensors. And we've got Stack of Awards on sustainability throughout the nation as for our efforts in, in that field. Traffic, that's, I know that's a big topic item.
Yes, it is.
You know, one, one big plus is the expansion of Community Drive to a four-lane. So that's going to reduce issues right there. As far as traffic, you see at the bottom there, we average about thirty-one visits through the week and fifty-three on weekends. You know, we're not a place that somebody goes just to go look around, they're coming with purpose. So our, our, our traffic count is very small in comparison to restaurants, gas stations and things of that nature. But you know, with the, with the expansions that are already taking place, Blithewood Road, Community Drive, you've already taken care of a large part of any potential traffic issues. And I understand that there's a new interchange going in just to the south of us, which will also be of a huge benefit to keeping traffic off of Blithewood Road and so as far as benefits to the city, you know, we, we promote growth in the community, we promote sustainability. We're building places that add value to the property. The reuse programs, the sustainability programs. We do it, obviously adhere to all city codes and standards. We will be working very closely with the building department to make sure that we meet the requirements and the standards that the community requires. And that pretty much is my presentation.
Right, so a lot of, well, Blithewood's had a lot of exponential growth as is with more to come. More residential developments being built. I like the idea of not having folks have to run to Columbia to store. I like to have a little bit of competition with the storage place there. I'm thinking that the only other storage, if, unless it's in a donut, is on Wilson Road, right?
You're, you're correct, yeah. Right down here.
Yep.
Okay.
And that is not in the town limits, just, just that way.
Got you, so, okay, so, alright.
And to, to that point, yes, there, there's people coming. And unfortunately, whether we agree with that or not, the people are coming.
Right.
And this is a service that, quite frankly, the community is going to need.
Absolutely. Alright. Commissioners, you have any questions?
I have a couple. Is this going to be a company-owned operated store or dealer-operated?
It is company-owned, yes.
Alright. About how many are employed initially?
It's really going to, it's, it'll obviously be on a ramp-up basis. But a lot of our facilities here locally, Kim, I'm sorry, about twenty employees.
Local hires considered first, correct?
Absolutely. That's, in fact, we encourage that, we, that's why, that would be our preference. And like I said before, we promote from within. We want our managers to come from within the ranks and even the higher-ups. You know, we want them to come from within so that they bring the knowledge of their locations and their communities with them to the higher levels. We don't just bring people in from wherever and plant them here. They are almost predominantly local.
So I'm an example of that. I'm a great example of that. I started with the company twenty-seven years ago. I started at this store that's three miles from my house. I worked there as a customer service rep, got promoted to manager, then got promoted to marketing company president over that market which I was in. Never moved, and now I'm an area vice president and never moved. I started out washing trucks twenty-seven years ago. Steve?
Right, I've, I've been an employee for thirty-three years. I started out as a part-time, working the counter, filling propane tanks, washing trucks. And moved to be a general manager. Then I went to the corporate regional office. And then I ran the, a repair hub for sixteen years before I moved over to the construction side. And I, I will be the person over this project. So I'm, I'm the one that's going to be building it. Or at least watching it get built, I'm not going to be out there with a hammer, but.
Commissioner, you have more questions?
If council approves this in the end of July, about when would it be open? How long would it take to build it?
As, as soon as we get final approvals, I'm on the phone the next day working with a civil engineer. We, we want to be about this and anticipating from civil to turning dirt would be, yeah, less, less than twelve months. I would, I would like to see it happen sooner than that. But this is a, this isn't going to be something that maybe we'll do it. You know, we're ready to pull the trigger.
Commissioner, yes, sir?
I have a question, I don't know, maybe if I overlooked it, I could have overlooked it. I don't see where the entrance will be and the exit will be as far as the traffic goes, coming in and out of the location. So it's only on Community Road? So it's only one entrance?
We have two entrances. And again, this is pre-play of building department, that we're looking at two entrances right here. Right here and right there. This is Community. Yeah, we quite simply, there just isn't room or safety coming in right here, because that's, you're right on that exit.
And is that intersection there?
And I do just want to note too that they obviously get these encroachment permits through the DOT. So, as you, I mean, the DOT may ask them to shift these one way or the other or, you know, so I just want to be clear that the, the driveway aprons and everything is not coming, the approval is not coming from the town. It'll be coming from the DOT. And certainly I know they will do whatever the DOT requires of that encroachment permit.
But we can be assured that there's no planned entrance from Blithewood Road, correct?
Yeah, well, that was actually why I came up to talk about real quick. So my hopes is if we can get this approved and get it passed and I can start building, my hopes is to sell the front parcels off to other developers. Just to help, go ahead.
Yeah, can, can I ask a question? So I mentioned in, in my memo here to, would, I know the, you're asking to rezon all eighteen acres. Would U-Haul be opposed to cutting out what you need and rezoning that to LI, but leaving the front section, Town Center?
I don't believe we'd be opposed to it, I'm just logistically not sure how it works out as far as, I don't want to go spend a bunch of money rezoning and then come find out, you know, I don't get approved. That would not go well.
Yep, so I, I did, and one thing I just failed to mention in the memo is the, obviously we have new LDO that's gone through first reading, has not gone through second reading. It does keep this, it is not Town Center, but it is hotel, excuse me, hospitality and tourism zoning district. So I do like that it's in the rear of the, I know that was a hurdle that y'all faced at, at one point. But if we kept that Town Center and, and then kept it hotel, you know, we could still get, you know, I think that's ample room for a hotel or possibly, you know, a restaurant or strip center, you know. You know, if we rezoned the whole thing, I do, you know, it's all limited industrial. And, and that means we could get any one of those permitted uses that I listed in the memo.
The last permitted use in that list.
Uh, yeah, and a hotel is not allowed in, in LI.
Well, and that's, and hopes that's who we're going to sell to. Obviously, we're going to be neighbors, we're going to be real picky of who we want to be our neighbor. We're not selling to a flea market or anything. So we won't, you know, businesses, people where people are going to be traveling because it puts eyes on our sight. So that's the hopes. Now, I have a question then, so did that mean if we, we get approved, we decide we're going to do it, and we get Marriott or whoever wants to come in, they'll have to rezon back?
If the full eighteen acres?
Right.
Yes.
But y'all would require them to rezon anyway, right? This is why I guess the point is.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I?
Yes, sir.
The, the risk that I think you take in rezoning the entire eighteen acres is that if you desire to sell the remaining portion for a use that is not allowed in LI, which is, so which a hotel is not allowed in LI, the risk that you have is that it may not get rezoned. I mean, it, it, it could, but it may not.
You really believe it wouldn't get rezoned? Because it sounds like that's what we want there anyway in the city. Oh, you don't?
No.
Okay. And the good news is, I'm willing to consider, like, if you kind of give me direction on who you're looking for and bring buyers or whatever.
That's a great point, because that was where my question was going. We have a couple of new commissioners on the board and we do have a history where there was initially set as a Town Center for a purpose. I was wanting to look the table at, to have a discussion with our financial planning and economic group so we can make sure we're not making a decision that goes against the initial idea of certain economic groups that we wanted to come in there, i.e. grocery stores, i.e. Starbucks, other great things like that in the elements of the development. We, we take in rezone to your preference. You are now in charge of who desires to come in there from a commercial perspective, which may not fit into the idea of what we wanted for this town. We're not opposed, I don't think we're opposed to the idea of having the business here, of your business. I think that's still a wonderful idea. We still want to make sure we're at least having the conversation with our economic development group to make sure that we're not missing any other opportunities that were, might come in in that front portion. That's all we're asking, that's what I'm looking for.
And Commissioner Smith, when that was dedicated as Town Council, I mean, not Town Council, Lord have mercy, Town Center, originally when this was on the table and Scout Motors did not exist, I believe we had almost, was it a hundred and twenty-six? We had a good portion of that Blithewood Road between Community, Locklear Road, on down to where the Scout entrance is, we were going to have retail, we were going to have recreation. So we've, we've given away a large portion of what Town Center was going to be there. So I'm not sure, I mean, LI used has government building or facility, including a postal facility, which the town needs. And a, a federal customer would be a good customer to have there forever versus the small post office that we have now serving a, a growing community. So it is, it is a, a, a bit of a, a play there. I definitely don't want a hotel across from University Plaza. Absolutely not. But, so I, I feel safe by not having that be an option on this list.
Just curious, I hadn't read the list, so is gas stations on the list for LI?
Um, no, you've got government building or facility, including postal, public utility, telephone, telegraph, radio station, transportation terminal and storage, including many warehouses, which affects you directly. Manufacturing, processing and packaging, packing listed, which is like food. Yeah.
Commissioner, just for point of order, for someone who works with SIC codes, this is still a, this is a very shortened, vague, because a SIC code is a five to six-digit number. So as it gets further, it has a much bigger perspective of different businesses that could fall into that.
Okay.
So don't, don't be misled by just the small narrowness of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Alright.
So the, the question, the two questions before us are, roughly, how many acres of the eighteen does this take up?
We would need at least six acres.
Okay, so a third, perhaps at least a third.
Yeah, so six to eight, that, that would be the max. So basically, half of the property would be.
Got you.
Mr. Chairman, one of the options that the commission certainly has available to you is you can make it a You can make it a condition of the rezoning, uh, that the property be subdivided. Uh, and, and so that doesn't require them to go do that, doesn't require them to, um, to, to be concerned about a, a risk of the zoning not being approved. Again, making investment and then not ultimately being able to do what you're able to do. My concern in zoning the entire site with an unknown use. Is that if you zone it tonight, you can't bring that back for one year to be considered for another use. You're, you're limited to that one-year window. Um, and so i- if you do it as a conditional application requiring that carve out. The parcel remains under its current zoning. Subject to rezoning of the land development ordinance. That you've previously sent to council that's been, uh, has received first reading, but has not received second reading at the council level. I, I'm just trying to be careful that you don't tie your hands, um, for what you would ultimately like to see happen. Because again, if you rezon it tonight, you're gonna have that one-year window that you couldn't consider another rezoning.
And Mr. Driggers, we, we appreciate your, uh, vast knowledge and experience, always, uh, always on point and quick with it. That, uh, the condition does sound more like a win-win for, uh, the town and the developer. How do we, how do we move that to vote?
If, if, if it's agreeable to the applicant and its desire of the commission. Uh, the, the emotion could be to approve with a condition that the property be subdivided. As, as a, as an individual parcel for this project only. And you're only approving the subdivided property.
Whatever we need to develop.
Yes, yes. And that way, we're not saying six acres, eight acres, seven.
Yeah, that was my issue.
That way, you're able to...
Subdivide prior to even going to council.
Yeah, that, that way, you're, you're able to determine where those meeting bounds need to be.
And are they, and they're still, uh, under the current land use that they're under until, like...
It would stay TC.
Okay.
Two acres though.
Nice. Yes.
Okay. Alright, is there, uh, and you all would be in agreement with that?
I believe so.
Alright. So commissioners, we've got, uh, we've got some new knowledge from Mr. Driggers. And, um, is there a motion to approve the site plan for recommendation to council? With conditions that the unused portion remain subdivided in a Town Center status? While they are able to use the, the, the portion that we've discussed tonight with the two buildings. Two state-of-the-art buildings for, uh, LI use? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that to be, uh, for them to subdivide and use their part that they need to use for the LI. And leave the TC like it is.
Alright, there's a, there's a motion and a second. We'll, yes, sir.
I think the motion is also identify the, the space that they purchased.
Eight acres?
Yeah.
Well, I need, I need to verify that then. What if I come back and say it's eight point nine or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that way, it still leaves it...
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I'll just be honest, I don't wanna commit to that. I have no intentions of using of all the space. I think I've met with several of you before, my intentions really is to sell the property.
Could we, could we agree that it's roughly in the ballpark below fifty percent?
Yeah, was it eighteen? Yeah, I, I, if you wanna agree on something, can we agree on ten acres? Cause I probably won't use that anyway.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
I hadn't built a site over ten acres ground up yet, so I feel comfortable saying that.
Yeah.
Because I guess I have to be honest, cause if I get in there and have a water issue or I have to put retention or something crazy. I can't, I can't foresee that in the future.
I believe that's fair.
That is a fair point. And also too, the, um, DHEC will be doing the stormwater review, um, of this site. So, um, uh, it's, it will not be the county anymore, it will be DHEC. Um, and he does bring it up a good point. We don't know what DHEC is gonna require. Um, so, uh, but it sounds like everybody is in agreement and will, willing to work, uh, with each other, um, to, to, to achieve this, so...
Right, so we've got...
They could come back and say, I need to do two acres of retention or something crazy.
Certainly possible.
Yeah.
Huh? Yeah.
Yeah, he was just saying, you know?
Well, yeah. No telling with Scout got water running.
And that is why they have preliminary on here, obviously, you know, the, these things are subject to change.
Right, so, uh, a- as it stands, we have a motion on the floor to approve with conditions to, uh, subdivide the land LI. Ten acres or less and the remainder, um, to be, to remain Town Center. We also have a second, uh, with, for approval to recommend to council with those conditions. Are we able to move to a vote now?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I get just one question?
Yes, sir.
The part that is gonna be left TC, or is it gonna leave it undeveloped the way it is? Or will there be plans to kinda plant more trees or...
Well, there's plenty of trees there already, so... Yeah, I, I, right now, I have no intention except to keep it mowed until it sells.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can find a buyer, get approved and buy a buyer quickly to help fund my project, so...
And I, I have spoken to some developers recently that are interested in several parcels around. They, they could be interested in that and if, if it came to that, I'd be happy to put you in touch with them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion before we move to vote? Alright. All in favor of approving, uh, to recommend to council with the conditions of subdivision that we've stated. Sound off by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, the motion carries, the vote passes. And I believe that is our only agenda action item. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Do we have any, uh, folks signed up?
I did not have anybody sign up.
Okay, so, um, is there anyone present that would like to take this time to speak for two minutes? Regarding the action item for tonight? I'll take that as a no. And with that being said, uh, is there a motion that concludes our agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Alright, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor of adjourning the meeting? Sound off by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you commissioners, thank you Kirk, thank you Mr. Driggers, thank you all.